Happy Wednesday night, Dara. Inshallah, we'll open up with a stock for la. May Allah purify our sins, no unknown committed to be committed, everything in between, inshallah. We'll do a reading of Sindi di. Dear Sheikh Abdul Bamba. By the recommendation of Sheikh Sufi Ba today, being the last Wednesday of Safar. And then we'll go into the text path of the more Siddiq, inshallah, pick up what we left off from last week, pray everyone as well. Inshallah, Assalamualaikum wa Ta'ala, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Stock for la be here, dear Sheikh Sufi Ba, dear Sheikh Zulu, dear bottom down, Bismillah. Allahumma Salih was Salim, Mubarak, Allah serina, woman, Muhammadin. Wa alihi wasa bihi wa toqab alminidi, wa shikal karimi, kawita iban alikbi, stuck for la be he. Stuck for la, Allah, to. If they mean to water and women, you. Stuck for la, Allah, to. If they mean to water and women, you. Sa'at u'ba'aki wa jerilahi, makfirtan min jummatul minahi. Tuktulahu min jummatul sada'iri. Ma alqba'iri wa min dam'iri. Gafiru likfirku lima'takadmaa wa'ma'ta'akraa wa'ma'binahuma. Fahimni al'ilmaa wa zini ilmaa wa amalan wa adaban wa fa'a'ma. Rabbi alikshifir ulma na'fiyah wa jal ayati min jaka imaniya. Ikshifli al'asra wa walwa midah, ya kairaman ka shifasir on gamida. Nishmaa jamia ma'tafaraa kalada, kthimina kadiwa safil kalada. Li kulada tefakil azamaya, ra bbi bikkun wa ta'siman kalamiya. Abliyaya agramu fit alawa, kairan kati ra'men kawal halawa. Barikliyala huma fi ayati, wa ja'fuadi wa tanna hayaati. Abliyaa kani biswa kuliman ya atup, wali zawa hira bin mayal gayub. Ya'bu la nakunubihita iran minazinugri wa ma'asib afati. Hata al'adkula janata latibu ida mutakum bi rahmatika, ya rahmanu, ya rahimu. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, salatu fati, Allahumma Salih was Salim, Muhammad. Alfatihili ma'uglika, wakatiwili masabaka na sirilaki belhaki. Hadilah sirati kal mustaqi, mu'ala alihi, ya'ka qadrihi, wa'midah, yallah. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Sindi di. Adiyasari tuba, Kadeem Masu, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Read from the Arabic and translation all the way through, inshallah, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Ya Allah, Bill Mustafa, Sindi di Allah, wa bi khalili ka Ibrahimay Allah. Ya Allah, employed by the blessings of Mustafa, Ya Allah, and by the blessings of thy beloved Abraham, Ya Allah. Wa bi khalim ka Musa, Salihin Qadirin, wa bi Shwab bin Wa Ishmaelay Allah. And by the blessings of thy interlock to Moses and Sally Al-Khider, and by the blessings of Shwab, and by the blessings of Ishmael, Ya Allah. Ameen, inshallah, for listening, we just say ameen when we come to the end of every verse, inshallah, Bismillah. Let's start again, Ya Allah, Ya Allah, Bill Mustafa, Sindi di Allah, wa bi khalili ka Ibrahimay Allah. Ya Allah, employed by the blessings of Mustafa, Ya Allah, and by the blessings of thy beloved friend Abraham, Ya Allah. Wa bi khalim ka Musa, Salihin Qadirin, wa bi Shwab bin Wa Ishmaelay Allah. And by the blessings of thy interlock to Moses and Sally Al-Khider, and by the blessings of Shwab, and by the blessings of Ishmael, Ya Allah. Wa bi Sulaimana nuhin Yunus Ali Asain wa Zakaria Ayah Yahuda, Ya Allah. And by the blessings of Sulaiman Nu Yunis Ayu, Ajob, and by the blessings of Zakaria Yahya. Good, oh Allah, Bismillah. Haruna Yassua Elayasin wa Adamada, Uda wazilki fi Isa Luta, Ya Allah. And by the blessings of Aaron Joshua, Elijah, Eliah. Adam, David, and by the blessings of Dulkeef, Isa, Jesus, Luke, and Ya Allah, stock for la. Wa Yusufin wa bi Ishaqin wa gheer he remove min anbi'anin, wa Rusaline lakay Allah. And by the blessings of Joseph, Isaac, and others among thy apostles and messengers, Ya Allah. Wa bi Maliki turan Tuma Safwa tihim Jibrela Tuma bi Michaela, Ya Allah. And by the blessings of the unity of the angels, and those among them encompassed with the purest divine essence, such as Gabriel, Gabriel, and Michael, Ya Allah. Wa sihibi navki Israfilah kabi di ar, wa hil khalika, kala'iki Israela, Ya Allah. By the blessings of Israfil, who was entrusted with blowing the trumpet in Azrael, who shall duly seize the soul of every creature, Ya Allah. Wa bi Sahaba ti Tumal Aulia Imaan. Wa Amilina menal Ahmari, Ya Allah, by the blessings of the companions of the Prophet and the friends of Allah. As well as those who actively practice that knowledge among the people of religious authority, Ya Allah. Wa bi Siddiki, wa bu Faruki, Tumabizi Nurani Tuma Abi Sittani, Ya Allah. By the blessings of Abu Bakr, the truthful Omar, the distinguished, who distinguished truth from falsehood. Utmaan, the possessor of two lights, and Ali, the father of the two grandsons of the Prophet, Ya Allah. Bi Malikin Zilma Zaya Shafi, Shafi, Abi Hanifa, teen, Amat Al Ma'amudi, Ya Allah. By the blessings of Imam Malik, the highly distinguished Imam Ashafi, Imam Abu Nafi, Abu Hanafi. And the praiseworthy Imam Ahmad Ibn Anbal, Ya Allah. Bilahi wa al-kalabil mafusi Tumabi Ar Shekal Afimi wa Bulkris Kursi, Ya Allah. By the blessings of the exhausted pen and the preserved tablet, thy magnificent throne and exalted chair, Ya Allah. Wa bil Quran, wa bil Turati, Tumabi Dawura Ja'abihi Wa Ruhu, Ya Allah. And by the blessings of Quran, the Torah, the Psalms of David, and the Gospel of the Spirit of Allah, Ya Allah. Balik Salty Was Taslimi Alehi, Allah. Wa Ahli Wasa bi Wa Azwaji, Ya Allah. Transmit my salutations of peace and blessings upon him, the Prophet, his family, and companions and wives, Ya Allah. Wa Aspalana Lena Rabbi Afiaton Wa Habana Kasta Fidareni, Ya Allah. Bismillah. Oh Lord, drop on us the curtain of well-being, affya, and bestow upon us our goals in this world and in the hereafter, Ya Allah. Waftalana kula ba bin kunta Fatihahu. Li Salihina menal kairati, Ya Allah, open for us all gates of graces that thou had opened to those endowed with a complete state of piety, Ya Allah. Wa Zluqbinan Bina Najah Rushdin Wa Kfi Nazalanan Salalan Wa Rujah Na'jinah Wa Shaytan, Ya Allah. Impel us to trot on the distinct path of righteousness, preserve us from the pitfalls, from the evils of the Jins and Satan, Ya Allah. Wa Kamilan kula Manan, Mananhu Wa Nak Suduhu Wa Habana Kula Manaktaru, Ya Allah. Yield to us all our ambitions, allow us to attain our objectives, bestow upon us any grace we choose, Ya Allah. Ameen, ameen. Wa Rudlan Wa Rudlan Wa Kulabi Sahbun Wa Thaharanin Wa Yasi Ran Kulab. Di Ta Siri, Ya Allah, yield to us all our ambitions, allow us to attain our objectives, bestow upon us any grace we choose, Ya Allah. Ta'willana Umrana Sahilana Badanana Wa Habana Rushda Wa Taufik, Ya Allah. Prolong our lives, strengthen our bodies, bestow guidance upon us, and grant us felicity, Taufik, oh Allah. Wa Damiran Kulab Da'in To Deir Rubina Kabla Wasulina Le Allah, Ya Allah. Wa Damiran Kulab Da'in To Deir Rubina Wakab Kabla Wasulina Na'Allah, Ya Allah. Destroy any enemy whose intention is to cause harm before he gains access to us, Ya Allah. Again, destroy any enemy. Whose intention is to cause harm before he gains access to us, Ya Allah, Ya Allah. Wa Kunana Asi Ma Man Min Kulib Malakatin. Wa Najina Min Balad Yadaray, Ya Allah, protect us from all kinds of ruin, deliver us from the calamities of the world all the time, Ya Allah. Wa Affatin Ahatin Ma Gusa Tin Mi Hanin. Zalzala Tin Shida Tin Wa Farkir, Ya Allah. Protect us from epidemics, illness, agony, afflictions, vehement earthquakes, as well as poverty, Ya Allah. Ihana Tin Kelat Tin Ma Vala Tin Galabin. Wa Fakat Tin Ah Atashin Wa Juhi, Ya Allah. Protect us from blemishes, insufficiency, from the fury of a tyrant, violence, debility, hunger, and thirst, Ya Allah. Wa Fitna Tin Wa Waba Harema Garakin Wa Barki Wa Masara Kin Wa Kadi, Ya Allah. Protect us from all forms of trials, from infectious disease, from being hurt in fire, from being drowned in water, from lightning, thunder, theft, and vain labor, Ya Allah. Ameen, Bismillah, Irene Wa Bardin Wa Nahbiin Kerbatin Nikamin. Dala Latin Arajin Wal Gami, Ya Allah. Protect us from excessive heat and cold, from plundering, from oppression, from hostility, from delusion, from grief, and from being paralyzed, Ya Allah. Wa Hamat Sin Wa Kata Ya Dala Tin Zalalin Wa Matki Wa Kafi. Tumla Kasfi, Ya Allah. Protect us from anxiety, from transgression, from stumbling in error, from transmutation, and from defamation, Ya Allah. Wa Gulat Sin Majunu Nin Gelat Sin Maradin Tumal Jutha Meni Wa Nuxeni, Ya Allah. Protect us from slack of sustenance, from the influences of evil spirits, and from fading away due to illness, Ya Allah. Wa Min Kabi Atin Dunyan Tuma Akiratin Wa Min Fuduhi Hima, Ya Allah, Ya Allah. Protect us from the evils of this world and from the next, as well as their dreadful humiliations, Ya Allah, Ya Allah. Again, Wa Bin Kabi Atin Dunyan Tuma Akiratin Wa Min Fuduhi Hila, Ya Allah, Hima, Ya Allah, Ya Allah. Protect us from the evils of this world and of the next, as well as their dreadful humiliations, Ya Allah, Ya Allah. Yaman Allah Kulishin Qadirun Wa Allah Arshalagim Mister Wa Bilkari, Ya Allah. Oh thou who hath power over all things, overwhelming the entire creation, being firmly established in thy magnificent throne of authority, Ya Allah. Ini Sa'altu Kakalban Kashi Anmutawa, Di Anma Ilman Katira Nafi, Ya Allah. Verily, I beg thee for a fearing heart and a humble one, and extensive knowledge of tremendous use, Ya Allah. Wa Ta'watan Kubilat Ma Mikna Tin Rufiat. Mazauja Tin Saluhat Bidini, Ya Allah. I beg thee for an accepted repentance, a lofty station, a virtuous and pious wife, oh God. Wa Kunmi Izan Lana Min Sharita Hadde Sadin. Ma Sharif Min Wa Sharil Ain, Ya Allah. Be our fortress against the evils of the possessor of envy, against the evils of the tongue, as well as against the evils of the eye, Ya Allah. Wa Sharisirin Wa Sharil Kalki In Sihimu. Wa Geni Him Wa Thawati Sami, Ya Allah. Be our refuge against the evils of sorcery, the evils of the creatures, men or Jins, and against the evils of venomous creatures, Ya Allah. Bismillah, ini Ja'altu Kafidareni Ya Ka'ya Takafi. Hisnan He Saman Sanan Fa Kun Maljaya, Ya Allah. O mine confidant, I take thee in this world and in the hereafter, as my inaccessible fortress, the one in whom I seek shelter, Ya Allah. Falasakil Ni'i La Nafsi Fa'ali La Kakun Midju. Mujib Beni Hey Fu Ma'aduka, Ya Allah. Abandon me not with my own soul, nafs as I go astray, be responsive whenever I beseech thee, Ya Allah. Watch out the Sani Wa Kalwi Feki Reka Maan. In Dalamati Ma'al Imani, Ya Allah. Cause my tongue and my heart to remember thee and hold a perfect belief in thee at the crucial moment of death, Ya Allah. Tabit Yakini Ya Fikalbi Bilawa Jalin. Hata Uhiha Bilika Kalhaka, Ya Allah. Establish permanently in mine heart the knowledge of certainty, Yaqeen. Let no fear abide therein until I passionately love thy ultimate encounter, Ya Allah. Wa Lij Alil Malta Rahatsin Wa Mafra Hatan. Min Kulisharin Ma Karbindaka, Ya Allah. Cause my death to be an announcement of good news, and to be a complete rest, and to be a protection against all pain, distress, and fear, Ya Allah. Wa Fathli Ya Alajisma Hey Thuruhu Farakani. Fil Kabri La Tubli Yan Hu Daray, Ya Allah. Shield my body against tortures in the grave, whenever the soul is separated from me, let it not undergo any deterioration nor hardship, Ya Allah. Wa Kunasi Ri Anisi Ana Ma Dafanu. Which is me Fasuta Wa He Danthama, Ya Allah. Be my assistant and companion at the time my body is buried in the grave where I may become lonely, Ya Allah. As Todd Mumana Ma Ima Kad Yura Wi Uni. Balik Fian Kulama Akshay Hu, Ya Allah. Join me not with that which causes terror in the grave, preserve me from anything that I fear, Ya Allah. Wa Najini Waja Mi Al Muslimi Nam'aan. Wa Naji Walidati Amina, Ya Allah. Protect me, my mother, and all those who bow to thy will, ameen, Ya Allah. Wa Kfilana Wallaha Wa La Hawas Turma Ah Iwana. Wa Tuufbina Wa Biha Filha'uli, Ya Allah. Forgive us and my mother, cover our defects, bestow benevolence upon us, and her protect us from terror, Ya Allah. Anha Tajawaz Wa Iyanar Hamana Fama. La Ha Siwaka Wa Antabahu, Ya Allah. Grant us complete forgiveness, have mercy on her, she has no one but thee and verily the art, the kind one, Ya Allah. Fi Barzakin Ma Kabrin Kulana Wa Zarah. Wa Min Kurubin Wa Kalfin Najy, Ya Allah. Be with us in the barrier and in the grave, preserve us from any distress or any kind of fear, Ya Allah. La Ta Tabir Habija La Satbika Diratin. Wa La Tukaya Rajaa Afika, Ya Allah. Do not afflict my mother with that which she cannot bear, and do not disappoint the hope she has in thee, Ya Allah. Wa Askinama Ahamin Na Ikathari Ma Man Ekthataru Men Jamii El Kalki, Ya Allah. Quench our thirst and hers in the waters of Qatar, which thou hast reserved for the only whom thou hast chosen over the entire creation, Ya Allah. Man Kana Yorshi Duthagain Wa Kulib Wa Yuliku. Takufreen Wa Yan Suru Man Yaksha Kay, Ya Allah. That was he who provided guidance to he who roamed in error, destroyed he who rejected faith, and yielded aid to he who had innermost fear in thee, Ya Allah. Muhammadin Matha Il Akyari Ka Aydina. Li Jana Til Kuldi Ya Mahashri, Ya Allah. Such a one was Muhammad, the fine flower of the elect, who would lead us to the everlasting paradise on the day of resurrection, Ya Allah. Alehi Was Salim Da Iman Abadan. Wa Man Ka'fa Huli Ya'umidini, Ya Allah. Alehi Salih was Salim Da Iman Abadan. Wa Man Ka'fa Huli Ya'umidini, Ya Allah. Alehi Was Salim Da Iman Abadan. Wa Man Ka'fa Huli Ya'umidini, Ya Allah. Upon him be eternal peace and blessings forever and ever, and upon any who follows him until doomsday, Ya Allah. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Salaamun ala merzalim, alhamdulillahi rabbil aramin. Glory to thy Lord, Lord of might and power. He transcends what they ascribe to him, and peace be upon the messengers. Praise be to Allah, the Lord, cherisher and sustainer of all the worlds. Rakee Sari Salihu, Rakee Sari Salihu, Rakee Sari Salihu, Rakee Sari Salihu, Rakee Sari Salihu. Rakee Sari Salihu, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Adiyasuke Sufi Ba, may Allah grant our entire Dara. Friends, families, loved ones, all those connected, joined too, as the blessings of this Sindi di. This life and the next, we thank you, Ya Allah. Thank you, Ya Allah, thank you, Ya Allah, by Gae Sari Salihu. Ameen. Stock for la for any mistakes. In that reading, we pray that Allah. Has mercy. Inshallah, we pray everyone as well, Assalamualaikum wa Ta'ala. To the beloved family, happy Wednesday, inshallah. Pulling up our path of the more Siddiq. Taking up from where we left last week, inshallah. How was everyone this evening? Same for everyone with us, inshallah. We're gonna continue reading through. Pray everyone can hear us, inshallah, clearly. If anyone has any questions or comments, we'll stop in between, we'll give some thoughts on some of the commentary, these words of Sheikh Abdul Bamba. It's translated. By beloved Sheikh Abdul Afami and Sheikh Sheikh Sufi Ba. And we're just going over our basics for Iman, Islam, Isan. Tasa Wuuf. The path of the more Siddiq, the true disciple. And we last left off. We're speaking on Isan. Briefly, can anyone here give a brief? Definition of what Isan was, who was here last week, and anyone can remember what Isan is, or anybody have their own definition of Isan? At this time, we could share before going forward. Not sure, as inshallah, if anyone has any recollection where we were last week.
Bismillah, I think Isan is the knowledge or the certainty of Allah.
I mean, close beloved, the certainty, actually, that's the Yaqeen. Inshallah, we did speak, Yaqeen is a quality of Isan. And being in the state of Isan, inshallah, so alhamdulillah.
Okay.
There was a specific definition for Isan, if anyone caught it last week, we'll go back to it if we need to, inshallah. If you don't remember. Wa Lekam Aslamatu Allah.
Bismillah, inshallah, Isan is the Sa'uf.
I mean, it is Tasa Wuuf, alhamdulillah, it's the essence of Tasmufism. Um, alhamdulillah, Sheikh gave us a definition, he's saying Isan was the purity of, excuse me, purity. Of intention and sincerity in action. This is the definition given to us by the Sheikh. At the beginning of this sentence, Isan is purity of intention and sincerity in action. Inshallah, it's the summation of, excuse me, Islam. And Iman, when. Excuse me, performed and combined together, it's the. Outcome, for lack of a better term, at this moment of, again, practicing our Sharia, which is the fit. If Islam, the jurisprudence, the basic knowledge, the way we practice our, way we pray. Um, the five articles of faith, excuse me, of our worship, five articles of Islam. Excuse me, six articles of faith is Iman, the five pillars of Islam. So combining the five pillars with the six articles, the practice and the worship. Brings us to a state of Isan, inshallah, when we incorporate the purity of intention and sincerity of action, inshallah. Let's just read Isan and go forward. In the reading, and again, if anybody has any questions or comments, we can stop, we can converse, inshallah. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Reviewing Isan, is purity of intention and sincerity in action. Isan is to be certain that there is no action in the world, and no intention in the soul that Allah does not know about. In this state, all of the acts of the worship will be according to the will of Allah. The worshipper is conscious that he is in the sight of Allah, so he does not, so he does only that which pleases Allah. Because of this, the Prophet of Allah, peace be upon him, said, worship Allah as if you see him, and if you do not see him, know that he sees you. This teaching is found in the Quran, in the verse, and he is with you wherever you are. And in the verse, if my servant Lax asks about me, I am near. By Isan, the worshipper has assurance that his worship is accepted. Iman and Islam are validated by Isan. When the worshipper realizes Iman by Tauhid, and Islam by Fik. He becomes safe and hidden from apparent shirt. Let's go back real quick, when the worshipper realizes Iman, that is those six articles of faith. We spoke about the belief in Allah, the belief in the angels, the belief in the prophets, the belief in the holy books, the belief in the day of judgment, and the belief in the divine decree. And everything that comes with the belief in those six things, which is like the brother said, this overall, the certainty. Of their existence, and. That they are. Within us as well, so to. Realize Iman by Tauhid, Tauhid is the knowledge of the oneness of God, that's Tauhid. That with Islam by Fik, practicing. Our five salat, practicing the fasting during Ramadan and outside of Ramadan, inshallah. Practicing giving zakat and charity, knowing when and how to. The Hajj, and. Foremost taking the Shahada, and affirming. That Allah is the only being in creation, he is the only deity worth worship, and that Muhammad, peace be upon him, is a messenger, so. Having the knowledge and the practice of these two things is what validates Isan. On this path, it says that when one is in a state of Isan, when the worshipper realizes Iman by Tauhid and Islam by Fik. He becomes safe from hidden and apparent shirt. That's sure, that's. The association of Allah with. Other partners and or. Putting our belief in prayers in something other than Allah, that is outwardly and inwardly. One who was in a state of Isan is saying is safe from the hidden shirt and apparent shirt, alhamdulillah. Why does one think that is, just based off what we read in that first paragraph, why would one in Isan? Be safe from hidden and apparent shirt, anyone, inshallah, stock for la.
Bismillah, what was the question again, brother?
It said, why is saying here that when a worshipper realizes Iman by Tauhid, Islam by Fik, that's validating Isan, that's coming into a state of Isan. When one is in a state of Isan, he is safe from hidden and apparent shirt, I said, what? So why would one think that, you know, why, or how we become safe from this hidden and apparent shirt, once we've reached the state of Isan, inshallah?
Bismillah, I think by the time, by the time we perfect Iman and Islam. And we going over to perfect each time. When I think about shirt, I'm thinking about being a polytheist, trying to say that it's more than one God or something. Something else is worthy of worship other than Allah, so. So, inshallah, was already secure. When you, when you did Iman, inshallah, was already secure. Or at least starting to get secure around Iman, you start to understand. Who you having faith on, on, and who you relying on. Sharia should have really locked it in. Once you found out the five pillars and one of them being, um, the Shahada, saying la, 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 la. So then with the Isan. Um. It brings, it, it should bring those two together even more, where you start to live your life. As Allah is watching you, because Allah is truly watching you. So at that point. I hope that you, you know what I mean, like you on level three of, of knowing Allah, getting, getting close to Allah. And you wouldn't, you would, you would try to keep yourself, um. You know, uh, free from, free from shark at that point, cuz. Inshallah, you made it through the first two, you know what I mean, Iman and Islam.
I mean, alhamdulillah. Did a Jeff Habibi. We'll take that for five hundred, Bismillah, alhamdulillah. It's a, it, it exactly that. Cuz you, like you said, you're certain that Allah is seeing you at this point, when you're in that state of Isan is. Nothing. You, there's no doubt in your, in within oneself that Allah is. In control, he's present. As present can be. Stop for love, it says, Isan is to be certain, there is no action and certain. That there is no action in the world and no intention in the soul. That Allah does not know about, so how can, if you, you give it, you've, like you said, you've covered these bases. In Islam. And Iman. Then by this time, inshallah, we get to a state of Isan, is that you, you. You know that Allah is there, that's the whole point. Is to, is to that, that will sue that junction with Allah. I think it'll, it'll, uh, we'll read about in a minute. So once one comes into that state, you, you, it, it says, is you're safe from hidden and apparent shirt, cuz. You can stop for love, you gonna be so worried about. Committing that shirt in that, in a state of Isan, it's like you, it's, uh, and I, I humdulillah for this class this morning. And, and, uh, it was, but it was a. Quote that I came across while we were studying this morning, it's come from Iman Ashafi. Speaking about knowledge, those of knowledge. And, uh, inshallah, we'll read, we'll try to post it while we're reading, inshallah, real quick, one, one second, but it's saying. All humans are dead, this is from Iman Ashafi, Bismillah. All humans are dead except those who have knowledge, and all those who have knowledge are asleep. Except those who do good deeds, and those who do good deeds are deceived, except those who are sincere. And those who are sincere are always in a state of worry. We read about, we just actually. Send blessings upon Iman Ashafi and other four. And the Sandidi, alhamdulillah, we didn't even go into the Sandidi and the. Cornucopia of knowledge and, and, and blessings that are in that text that are just during tuba. But he definitely was in a state of Isan. When he wrote. Those prayers, alhamdulillah. The stock flows, it just felt like we needed to go back on Isan, cuz it was so much in here. It's so much in his son. And we can get hung up just on making our five salat. Or fasting before we even get to. What is Isan, like, how can we? It's. Again, it seems like so much. But what is saying, what is Isan, it is purity of intention. And sincerity in action. This is the sum definition. We've heard the Sheikh give this definition over his. Synthesis definition of Sufism or the state of the sun is. This here. Purity of intention. And sincerity in action. Seeking to purify our thoughts. Words. And actions, all intentions start. In the thought realm. Before they become words, if we speak them and actually act them out. For it to manifest in the physical. So again, just that. Slight tip. Only sign. Inshallah, we pray brings benefit on the rest of our Iman and Islam. Inshallah, cuz it's a. It's a triangle. It's a trifecta, they're all working in tangent. Inshallah. Read forward, Bismillah. The worshiper enters into Isan by Tassawu for what is referred to as seeking perfection through initiation. When the worshiper realizes all three of these, Allah makes him free from spiritual struggle and honors him with protection from sin. Immunity from disbelief is achieved by Iman. Immunity from disrespect of the Sharia law is achieved by Islam. And immunity from self glorification is achieved by Isan with purity and sincerity in action. Let's read that again. When the worshiper realizes all three of these, Allah makes him free from spiritual struggle. And honors him with protection from sin. Immunity from disbelief is achieved by Iman, immunity from disbelief is achieved by the belief in. Those six Articles of Faith. Immunity from disrespect. Of the Sharia. Disrespect of the law is achieved by. The practice of our five pillars of Islam. And immunity from self glorification or Ria is achieved by. Isan, the practice of purity. And sincerity in action and intention, stuck for love. The discipline of Iman is Tauhid or knowledge of the oneness of God. The discipline of Islam is Fiqh jurisprudence. The laws. The discipline of Isan is Tassawu. Sufism. Definition Tassawu, according to Al Ghazali, is to purify the heart and to dedicate it to Allah without turning your attention to other than Allah. The first thing a Murid also spelled Murid when speaking of. As disciple of Sheikh Abdul Bamba. The first thing a Murid should obtain is the knowledge of Tauhid according to the teachings of the Sunnah. Next, he should learn how to perform his personal obligation of worship by Fiqh, learning how to make the salat. Learning the prayers of the salat. Inshallah. After this, it is, if his focus is to obtain junction, will sue to the Lord, he should be initiated by a real master. Who follows the footsteps of the Prophet, the Sunnah. This is. Now, at, one can have Islam, it says, one can have Isan, I'm assuming Iman, but. Two Isans coming from. The initiation of a real master who was following in the steps of the Prophet, Salatu Wa Sallam. Sheikh gives spiritual education to the Murid through knowledge and worship. He teaches him by changing his actions of extra worship. When they become easy and not difficult for the Murid. The definition of iradah, will, is that the Murid should avoid conformity. The word Murid is coming from the word iradah, the will, one who has the will. To do the will of Allah, to seek Allah. Seek the oneness of Allah. And his satisfaction and pleasure. The Murid should have no will of his own. He should put his soul in accordance with the will of Allah by observing Allah's command and concentrating on Allah's attributes of Qudra. Power. Potential power. Iradah, his will, his Ilm, his knowledge, Hayat. His life, and Samah. His hearing and Basara, his seeing and Kalam. His speech. The observation of Qudra, power, and iradah will is to know that Allah has the power to elevate and perfect you like the Aulia. The friends of Allah or diminish and humiliate you like one of his enemies. The way to observe Qudra. Or Allah's power and his will. Is to know that Allah has the power to elevate and perfect you, just like the Aulia. Just like the friends of Allah, or. He has the power and will. Ability to use his will to diminish and humiliate. You like one of his enemies. Stop for love. The observance of Ilm, knowledge, is to be conscious that Allah absolutely knows all about you. Your thoughts, words, actions, deeds, and intentions, not knowledge about. How the flowers are made per se, how they grow out of the ground and. How the stars are moving through the sky, with observance of. Knowledge is to be conscious that Allah, Allah knows, his knowledge is all about. You. All about. Me, he knows all about. Our thoughts, our words, our actions, deeds, and intentions. Allah's knowledge surpasses all that we can fathom, stop for love. The observance of Hayat, life is to know that Allah is eternal without death, the observance of Samah is. And, uh, stop for, observance of Samah, hearing and Basara, seeing, seeing is to be conscious. That at all times Allah sees and hears you. The observance of Kalam, speech is to conform yourself to his orders and abstain from his prohibitions. Among the humans, there are believers in divine grace and justice. As well as disbelievers in divine grace and justice. Whoever wants to disbelieve, let him disbelieve. Allah gives his mercy to whom he wants. One part of disbelief is having a bad opinion of those whom Allah has gratified. Those who have this bad opinion have it because they limit the mercy of Allah. To certain time periods and groups of people. Whoever really seeks the glory of both worlds should always be conscious of Allah, Taqwa. Allah says in the Holy Quran, let me stop right there real quick, does anybody have any questions? Or comments about anything we read thus far, what we go for? Bismillah. Just Allah says in the Holy Quran, the highest and most noble act. The stuff for the highest and most noble amongst you is the most conscious of Allah. Taqwa. Or God consciousness. And next world after the mercy of Allah, nothing is a benefit other than good actions. Good actions are only accepted on the basis of Taqwa. We've heard the phrase, let your, uh, uh, uh. Let your intention. Be the. Knowledge, be the leader of your action, or let your knowledge be the leader of your action. This, the importance of the, our intentions. On. Everything we do, inshallah, but especially. Just making prayers. Um. Says any, any good actions, any good deed that we could think of doing, we, we. Pray we have again pure intentions. First and foremost, when doing these actions, cuz it says that Allah. Only accepts those deeds. That were done with him in mind, there were, he only, he's only accepting deeds that were done with God consciousness, with pure and positive intentions. So. We can do things, they may, they may have a benefit, but if we didn't put forth the intention. PC be Allah for the sake of Allah, or just a. Affirm, a, a positive intention before the, the act. Then. The deed was done. In vain, stop for love, this is what it's saying. Sheikh Abdul Bamba, stop for love. Allah says in only Quran that he only accepted deeds of those who have Taqwa. The Murid should obey the orders of his Sheikh. They should not spend their time in futility. They should increase their spiritual aspiration, Hema, to reach the Lord. They should always compete for good actions. Practice sincere repentance and give Adia. Adia is not charity, but it is a gift. It was first given to the prophets and then the friends of Allah, the Walid, the Aulia. Adia brings blessings, Barakah to the disciple. The blessings cannot be rented, borrowed, or stolen. The blessings have to be earned. Adia helps the disciple find guidance and enter the paradise that is promised to those who have Taqwa. The idea is a gift, it can be. Currency or financial gifts. But you also hear us as often as possible, try to give many of these, as many prayers as possible to. The Sheikh. To our friends, families, our loved ones, inshallah, they just. We could do some zikr for somebody, that could be in a deer form. That could be a charity, inshallah. Just saying, stop for love, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. The Muslim. Is between two boundaries, the boundary of the Sharia and the boundary of the Hakika, we is where we stopped last week, inshallah. The boundary of the Sharia prevents you from doing apparent sins. The boundary of the Hakika prevents you from doing hidden sins. The pure Sharia is the teaching from the revealed books. The luminous Hakika is what is contained on the hidden tablet, the Laumafus. That has been revealed or not revealed in holy books. What Allah, the Prophet Muhammad peace be upon him and I order is to be in accordance with the Sharia. There are three kinds of orders, Bismillah, the first type of order is from Allah by his books. This may be without intermediary by the Quran or with an intermediary by the Sunnah. These orders are for your benefit. Second type of order is from an Arif, knower of Allah. These orders are for the benefit of both the Arif and the disciple. The third type of order is from one who has no knowledge. This type of order is for his own benefit and is damaging to the disciple. Sharia and Hakika. There are two types of believers. The first follows a guide and a second follows the traditions. It is not permissible to follow a guide who is not an Arif, knower of Allah. If the guide is an Arif, the one who follows him should never disobey him. The believer who follows the traditions of the Prophet will be safe. If he practices what the scholars have noted and does not seek to criticize or look for errors in other Muslims. The Sharia is pure and exempt from all errors, but all of the believers are not at the same level of comprehension or comprehension. The Hakika has immunity because it is fixed on the hidden tablet. But the masters have various degrees of understanding. The organ of Iman is the heart, the organs of Islam are the members of the body, the organ of Isan is the eternal, internal being. Again, the organ of Iman is the heart. The organs of Islam are the members of the body. And the organ of Isan is the internal being. Disciple has an obligation to respect all books of reference on Tauhid, Fiqh, and Tassawu. The disciple is obligated not to seek for the singularity. Or unique blessing. Given to any of the elected masters that was not bestowed upon others. Whoever enters into the ocean of Hakika without the shift of Sharia is unintelligent, they will never reach realization and bring benefit to the community. Oh, it's right there, stop, that was. The section on Isan. From the path of the more city. Inshallah, were there any questions or comments? On Isan, how anyone. Heard this information, um. Whether, you know, it was just any, any, anything needed to be clarified, maybe you have it in your own words where you understand it. But, um. To open up the floor briefly for questions, comments on Isan, inshallah. What Iman Islam, any sign, any aspect of Iman Islam, or Isan, inshallah, stop for love. And I just say I'm appreciative of this pass. I went. Thirty something years not knowing that. thirty something years not knowing that there was anything after Islam, or that there was any other aspects Islam other than what I saw, or what was, you know, told to me. I knew, I knew of the Sunni and I knew the Shiite, but I didn't really know what a Sunni Muslim was, or what a Shiite Muslim was, Stakfala. I didn't know what a Sufi Muslim was, or any other type of Islam, let alone that there was, is another aspect called Iman. And then Isan, that a Muslim was just one aspect, one state within the, the reality of Islam, that there were other levels to be reached and attained, such as the, the Mu'min, the one who's attained Iman, and one in the Musin, one who's attained Isan, Alhamdulillah, so. Appreciate Allah for guiding us in this ocean, giving us the guidance of Sheikh, especially on this path. To read these teachings, this is these teachings are so condensed from Chekha Abu Bambo, they're just like if one was to read other texts from Countess, other Sufi masters and Islamic scholars, the information would likely be there, you'll probably get the same information somewhere within the three, four, five, six hundred pages of those texts, Insha Allah. And some of them are definitely shorter, but just the way that Serene Tuba worded all of his writings, and again, made them to rhyme, this text probably rhymed before translated into English. And was written in a way that no other Islamic scholar, then or now, has been able to duplicate. So again, we're just blessed, just emphasizing the blessing of us to be in this Dara, Alhamdulillah. Bismillah, there's no questions or comments, we will go forward, some aphorisms, we'll read on a dab. And we'll read read a few pages on Shakur and dab, Insha Allah. Bismillah, these are some aphorisms from Kadeem Rasool, Alhamdulillah, Gade Jeff. Said, "The truth is very heavy and difficult for some to support. It is like thunder and lightning. When it is heard, each person thinks that it will strike them. A dab, often called good character or proper behavior, makes the truth easy to assimilate. Whoever does not have faith in their heart is a disbeliever, a kaffar. Whoever does not practice Islam with the members of their body is one who disrespects the law, Faasik. Whoever does not perfect themselves by Isan in their inner being is one who associates partners with Allah, Mushriq, and practices self-glorification, Ria. Whoever does not conform his thoughts to the Holy Quran will go astray. He will cry and regret it in the next life. Whoever does not show consciousness of Allah's Taqwa by observing Allah's recommendation, avoiding his prohibitions and does not benefit from the mercy of Allah, by making sincere repentance before his death will be clearly lost in the next life." Bismillah. A dab, since there are two types of a dab. A dab is manners and good character in the way of Islam. Bismillah, so the dab toward, there are two types of a dab, a dab towards Allah and a dab towards people. There are four parts to a dab towards Allah. Number one, obey his recommendations. Number two, obey his prohibitions. Number three, be thankful for his gifts. Number four, have patience during trials. Again, four parts of a dab towards Allah. Obey his recommendations. Avoid his prohibitions. Be thankful for his gifts and have patience during trials. There are three parts of a dab towards people. Honor those who deserve honor. Be subtle with those who debates with you. Let those who do not deserve honor or debate with you follow their own way. Adapt towards Allah according to his recommendations and prohibitions. The first aspect of adapt towards Allah is repentance, Taqwa. Repentance is to immediately stop doing all that is prohibited by the Sharia and to sincerely regret all bad actions, words, and false beliefs. The Ma'raj should only, should purify themselves by not telling lies, talking bad about others, and looking at or touching forbidden things. After the accomplishment of repentance, a Murrad should conform himself to the recommendations of his spiritual guide that will only recommend the best for him. The Murrad should not have any inward or outward apprehension in trusting their guide. The only objective of the Sheikh is to guide a disciple to paradise and prevent them from going to hell. Bismillah. Says the five qualifications of actions according to the Sharia. As far are the obligatory acts. Mandu, the recommended acts. The Mubah, the permissible acts. Makru, the disliked acts. Haram, the prohibited acts. It is necessary to perform the obligatory acts on time. It is not necessary to seek permission to perform obligatory acts. Recommended acts are the acts according to the actions of the Prophet, peace be upon him, or his Sunnah. You do not need permission to perform those, them. Permissible acts that help to perform obligatory and recommended acts should be performed. The acts that do not pertain to obligatory and recommended acts are considered by some to be a waste of time. The disliked and prohibited acts should be stopped immediately. You do not need permission to stop them. This is a dab towards Allah by obedience to his recommendations and avoidance of what he prohibited. Bismillah. Briefly on that, those, the far acts such as the voodoo before making Salat. That's an obligatory act. A Sunnah act in the voodoo would be to do the voodoo three times, but it's not something that's obligatory. They said it's recommended by the Sunnah. But if one doesn't do it, it's not gonna hurt the worship, or it's not going to uh uh invalidate the voodoo at all. When going to make, or the Salat, when going to make prayer, Insha Allah. There are many acts in many uh books of Sunnah that we can find, um, that this prophet has done. Whether it be doing things with his right hand, uh uh, you know, always eating with his right hand, or walking into the home on the right foot, walking into the bathroom with the left foot, um. So many, literally thousands of, of, of Sunnah acts that we can incorporate into our obligatory acts. But they're not, or alongside, but they're not mandatory. This is just the way to show adapt towards Allah. By trying our best to abide by the obligatory and Insha Allah, we can incorporate anything permissible or recommended. And stay away from those that are disliked and prohibited. Um, and we're in a good speaking, be, be in a good space, Insha Allah. Saying thankfulness, Shukur. Thankfulness to Allah is to know that all gifts are from Allah. When the gifts are appreciated and thankfulness is shown to Allah for the gifts, the gifts will endure. If you attribute the gifts to other than Allah, the gifts will be fleeting. You should have an attitude of thankfulness. Shakur for the generosity and benevolence of Allah, we hear it all the time, attitude gratitude at all times, Insha Allah. Allah says in the Holy Quran, "If you are thankful to me, I will give you more." And Sahih Muslim Hadith, the Prophet peace be upon him, explains more to mean the contemplative vision of Allah in paradise. Thankfulness prevents one from having to account for the actions in this world and the next. It prevents you from going to hell. In the Holy Quran, Allah says, "Few of my servants are thankful." In fact, being thankful for the gifts of Allah is only possible to those who have Isan. Says, "In fact, being thankful for the gifts of Allah is only possible to those who have Isan." Allah speaks about them in the Holy Quran when he says, "Those who perform and perfect their acts and deeds will obtain the best and more." Allah gives blessings, Barakah, to the one who performs acts of thankfulness. The blessing is the fruit of the Taqwa and good character, Adab. Whoever has Taqwa and has good character will receive outward blessings, inward blessings, or both outward and inward blessings. Bismillah, anyone have any comments on Shukur, thankfulness, that was, that was pretty deep explanation on how to be thankful to Allah, what comes with that? Any questions or comments? Not, I'll just say that I, it's, it's the emphasis on being thankful throughout the Quran and our teachings from the Sheikh is that it just makes us reflect, you know, to that, that Alhamdulillah. When we say all praises, or all praises to Allah, uh 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 there are so many things to be thankful for. If we just put ourselves in that state of Shukur, if we find, and it, it, it could, it could be this, for that breath, that last breath we just took. Thank Allah, somebody didn't get to take that. Somebody didn't get that. Somebody didn't wake up this morning, somebody's not gonna wake up tomorrow morning. You know, these are cliche things to be thankful for, but if we are truly sincere for that meal we had today, it might have been, whether we had one meal or three. Whether we didn't, we may not have had a meal today, but we had one yesterday, Alhamdulillah. Just finding a reason to be thankful and staying in a state of thankfulness and Shakur opposed to focusing on anything other than something to be thankful for. It's powerful. It has more power, says the blessing is the fruit of Taqwa. The fruit of God consciousness and good character, Adab. The Sheikh says, say, Alhamdulillah for everything, Alhamdulillah, if it was something we thought was good, Alhamdulillah, something we thought was bad, we never, Allah is the best of planners, we don't know what. I know, we just, you just stubbed your toe, Stakfala, I just did it today, I Stakfala, had to catch myself. Trying to at least, Alhamdulillah, just even in those moments, you might bump your knee on the bedpost or anything, ah, Stakfala. Ah, La Wakbar. Can we bring ourselves to a state to even, to be that, to be thankful for Allah for those things, for the flat tire? For spilling the coffee on ourselves before we go into work. This is, this is, this is some of the challenges. Just every day. But Insha Allah, maybe, maybe look and see these things as opportunities to get closer to Allah, Insha Allah. Bismillah, it's showing patience during trials. Showing patience during, this is Saboor, ah, there is just Sheikh Fatima for speaking on Saboor. Says, showing patience during trials demonstrates one of the highest virtues. Allah says in the Holy Quran, "We will test you by fear, hunger, wealth, sickness, and material goods. Give good news to those who are patient. The best patience is in the observance of obligations and the avoidance of prohibitions. The best patience is in the observance of obligations and the avoidance of prohibitions. Some of the wise predecessors have said that only those who are patient in the face of harsh treatment from others without inward or outward retaliation for the harsh treatment have true patience. Again, it says, "Some of the wise predecessors have said that only those who are patient in the face of harsh treatment from others without inward or outward retaliation for the harsh treatment have true patience." It's heavy. Bar Yar, Bismillah, Salaam Sheikh. I thought you, I thought you had a comment, Sheikh Stakfala.
Like a bomb, when you just spoke on true patience is in the face of harshest, harshness. And you have no inward or outward retaliation, I was like, bomb exploded in my head.
No inward or outward.
It made me think about Granny teaching, she gave us from Isa, Jesus, peace and blessings be upon him growing up. Um, when would Jesus say, we didn't think something? You already done sin. When I was young and Sunday's class, like, as we got older, fast forward into the now, I used to wonder like, wow. At least I didn't do the wrong, but then when I start understanding mentalism, before you even think it, before you even think something. You think something before it even manifests. So we can outwardly put on a mask and say, well, okay, I'm not gonna say nothing back. But if deep in your heart, you like saying to yourself, yeah, that rah 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 rah, it's just gonna come back on you seven times. And something you don't like within them, really is something we don't like within ourself, because really we all want is just a different aspect of the only reality, Allah. Salaam, Mayne, peace. Like this, like earlier today, earlier than rewind, come again.
Rewind and select them.
Wow. I'm locked, give thanks. I say, I won't even gonna say nothing, I'm just gonna listen.
I'm glad you did, Sheikh, because I Stakfala, it just, I gotta segue now, because we see retaliation, and you know, you know, we got a thing for Raabibi Ma. Ya Raheem, Ya Raheem. And, and the eighth verse, this is the one that Serene Sally who recited three times, it said, Ya Malak al-Mukiah, oh, King of the Worlds, Manjala and Kawadin, you are above all retaliation. And we just sat on this line sometime before Sheikh Sally, we talked about this. And Allah being the king of the worlds and being above all retaliation, and then when I just seen it just now, you were speaking, without inward or outward retaliation. What other type of retaliation is there, other than inward or outward? For the harsh treatment, it's
It's that true humility, like at the end, what we say, give us true, what the science was to serve, the sequence of love, gratitude. Stakfala, okay, but yeah. Because it's funny, you said before class started, or maybe about ten minutes in the class, I had um, went off and read Ya Raheem, right quick, it just, that's, I was like, wow, right. Ya Raheem, I remember you, yeah, thought on Ya Raheem classes, yes.
We stuck on that line for a while, yeah, to be, to be above retaliation. You said, why, what, what is it about? Again, the mercy. Of Allah, we talk about patience right now, the patience. The Shaker said patience. Just incorporates so many elements. Or attributes of Allah within it, and to truly be patient. Is, uh, I remember, I remember Sheikh Wali saying that patience is, is. It's without complaint. He said, it's a, 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 endurance without complaint. For sure. Kunkati man, Alhamdulillah. To be patient, to be, is to endure these things without, without complaining. Inwardly or outwardly, without lashing out inwardly. Or outwardly. Again, may Allah strengthen us in these, in these things, cuz we, it's. It's almost become a, a, a hardwired into our nature, like the Sheikh says, we have to rewire our, our, ourself. You know, we've, it's been a long time, we've been programmed a certain way. It's gonna take some rewiring, it's gonna take some time, it's gonna take some practices. And some practice with the practices, inshallah.
Oh no, I was just gonna say the other day. I was getting coffee and a brother said, how you doing, brother? I say. I can't complain, I say, matter of fact, I don't even wanna hear my inner self complain. So I'm working on it, I'm like, I don't even wanna hear my inner man complaining.
Right, Stuck for law. You guys, and Abibi, stuck for law.
Mashallah, y'all, I love that, I love that shit, yeah, I don't even wanna hear my inner self complaining. I was gonna. I was gonna add, cuz um, yeah, when we was going over Rabbi B, my yes, Ra'hu, we was going over that one. And we was picking out those lines. That one, like, being above retaliation, Allah's above retaliation was always like a heavy one to me. And it just made me feel like. Super safe, you know what I mean, it, it made me feel like I ain't had to take retaliation, or, you know. Be patient during, during trials. Because of, it's all in Allah's hands, truly. So, made me also think about this, um. This like story, and it's not verbatim, it's not word for word, but I, I think I'm gonna get the point across, inshallah, about. Sheikh Ahmed Tijani, and he, um. Let's just say like he was in his village or something and. It was maybe a person like a neighbor or something like that, like a neighbor, or like. Somebody that he had to interact with daily, like the him and his community had to interact with daily. And maybe they weren't really favorable, like maybe they didn't really. You know, he was a rough person to get along with, we're saying, like that person was rough to get along with. And I guess he passed away. And then, um, the disciples, Sheikh Ahmed Tijani was like, yeah, kinda like, oh man, we. Finally, you know what I mean, like that dude was giving us a rough time. And then, um, Ahmed Sheikh Tijani was like. In so many words, he was like, um, you know, don't. Like, let's not, let's not put that type of energy out there, like. Let's just say that our trial with him is done, that's what he's saying, like. Maybe the person didn't even die, maybe they just moved away, but he was like, the trial with him is over. Like he endured all that, he endured that person. For, for a while, and then immediately, you know, his disciples was like. Uh, out loud, like, you know how they feel, wow, man, I'm, I'm glad that dude's giving us a rough time, like, I'm. Sheikh Tijani was like, nah, like. Let's not even go there, like, let's not even be like, yeah, yeah. He said, I, just our trial is over, you know, I, the trial is over, like, that's, that's it right there, like, it's more coming, but that trial is over. You know what I mean, he didn't say, yeah, I'm, I'm happy that it's over. He's just like, it's just over, you know what I mean, so that's, that's what I thought about, um. For that, and I wanted to share that story, mashallah.
Alhamdulillah.
Sheikh Mustafa, Abibi and family. I'm not a Mu Hadith, I ran scrolling, Stoffel off for scrolling. On my phone, but they say what you look at, that, that I go and popped up, and Hadith popped up earlier today and said. Um, the Prophet, peace and blessings be upon him. Um, during the time of war. They had said that, um, was a woman. That was nursing, and when she would see the prisoners of war. She were, um, and if they were children, she would take them and nurse them. And to make fast forward, Zalman would word for word at the end and say. Would this mother, the Prophet, peace and blessings be upon him, the companions had asked him something. And he say. Would that mother? Throw her baby into hell, and I was thinking to myself, she would nurse another children. And it would say Allah is rock mine, is greater mercy, greater than death, and I. Well, Habibi gave his example, made me think of that, because he was speaking, um. Sheikh Fatima Asura, how she beautifully displayed severe, and we jumped to Rock Mine. So I just wanted to get that last example of Rock Mine from Prophet Muhammad Al-Hadith that I ran across the day, scroll.
I mean, Alhamdulillah. Alhamdulillah to the family indeed, Pritish Sheikh. A ocean, we're in the ocean, Alhamdulillah, we're in the ocean right now. How to finish this chapter, before we close for the evening, inshallah, coming up on an hour and a half. Appreciate the. Comments, participation, Alhamdulillah. Bismillah says. Some great Sufi masters say that Allah will test the true believer in order to, in order to purify him until he walks on the earth without sin. One day, the Prophet Moses, peace be upon him, passed by the dead body of a man. Who had been eaten by an animal, and he recognized the face of the man. Moses stopped and said to Allah, O Allah, this man was a good man who obeyed your commands, what happened to him? Allah revealed to Moses, oh Moses, he asked me for a level that he could not reach by his own acts. So I gave him this trial to make him reach his objectives. The consensus of the great masters is that those who complain to other than Allah for their trials. Will lose the sweetness of their worship. According to the traditions, Allah revealed to the Prophet Esra, peace be upon him, that if you receive trials, be careful not to complain to the creatures. And be with me like I am with you. I never complained to my angels when they bring me your bad deeds, so never complain to my creatures when you receive trials from me. Allah revealed to the Prophet David, peace be upon him, oh David, if you submit to all that I want, I will give you all that you want. If you do not submit to all that I want, I will make it difficult for you to get what you want, and in the end, it will be as I want. Oh David, be patient with the divine decree, you will receive the assistance of Allah. One of the prophets of Allah complained to him about a trial. Allah revealed to him, how long will you complain? I am not worthy of your complaint, situation was decreed in the unseen world. You want me to change the world for you? You want me to change what is written on the hidden tablet? And do you, and do what you want in place of my will, now, Stuck for law, I gotta read this again, cuz the first time I read this. I was, I was bugging out a little bit, just imagining. The Stuck for law, the prophet receiving this. This, uh, this message from Allah, Stuck for law, it says, one of the prophets of Allah complained to him about a trial. Allah revealed to him, how long will you complain? I am not worthy of your complaint. Your situation was decreed in the unseen world, you want me to change the world for you? You want me to change what is written on the hidden tablet and do what you want in place of my will? In order to please you and not please myself. I swear by my glory, if you conceive something like that in your heart again, I will take the mantle of prophecy from you. And throw you in the hellfire without consideration. This was a lesson to that prophet. Bismillah. I just had to pause there. Again, referencing. When speaking of, uh, patience. It can't go without speaking on. Again, how we endure these trials and not complaining. Or if we do complain, bring our complaints straight to Allah. And not to the creatures. Alhamdulillah. That last paragraph hit so strong. The first time you read it. Talk about Adam bomb, Adam, an atom bomb, Stuck for law. We'll read to page seventy-five. And we'll close for the evening, Bismillah. Alhamdulillah, Exologist posted Rabbi Bima, Alhamdulillah. It says, a dad with people, there are three aspects of a dad, good character towards people. A dad towards spiritual people who seek for the next life to Akira. A dad towards materialistic people. And a dad towards the knowers of Allah. A dad towards spiritual people demonstrates knowledge and practice. If they see someone who is not seeking for knowledge or practicing the recommendations of Islam. They blame them and consider them unconscious and untrustworthy. If they see someone who seeks for knowledge and practices the recommendations of Islam. Even though his inner being does not focus on Allah, they trust him and give him consideration. Spiritual people should see the manifestation of the basic recommendations of Islam in you. You should demonstrate this outwardly to please Allah and bring the heart of the believers together. Remember that religion is good advice, I thought that was, that was. Heavy when I read that, religion is good advice. And let's read that, this is, one, real briefly, what is it saying on the adapt towards spiritual people? And who, and who are spiritual people, these, uh, these could be the. All those who we may see in the mosque, in our travels, or. If we're still in, in, may travel through a church. Uh, anywhere, any, a, a, a Hindu temple. Anywhere we may be where there are spiritual people. Says that they are looking. If they see someone who seeks for knowledge and practices the recommendation. Even though his inner being is not focused on Allah, they will trust this person and give him consideration. If they see someone who was not seeking for knowledge or practicing the recommendations of Islam, speaking just about Islam right now, then they blame. Them and consider them unconscious and untrustworthy. They're only going off what they see. Outwardly. What they're saying for the sake. Of Allah's pleasure. That we should demonstrate outwardly. The basics of, of our Deen, the basics of our Islam. Said, the manifestation of the basic recommendations of Islam in you, the spiritual people should see. And you should demonstrate this outwardly to please Allah and bring the hearts of the believers together. So it's not the cause and division. We wanna try to fall in the lines. And this is practicing good adapt towards the spiritual people. Inshallah, remember that religion is good advice, with materialistic people is people of the world. A dad is using wisdom to gain their satisfaction without disobedience to the orders of Allah. How can we gain their satisfaction without disobeying the orders of Allah? Both Allah and people are satisfied when someone satisfies people without disobedience to the recommendations of Allah. Whoever pleases people and violates the recommendations of Allah, Allah will be displeased with them and remove their faith before death. They should repent for their actions if they do not want to lose in this life and the next. The Prophet, peace be upon him, said, we should not obey anyone whose recommendations go against the orders of Allah. With knowers of Allah, a rich Allah, a dad is to believe in them and to have good opinion of them without being suspicious of them, if you doubt. If we doubt, we are out. The Noah of Allah has no focus other than Allah. If someone does good in front of him, he will not react in a way to make the person feel proud in order to corrupt his good act. If someone does something bad in front of him, he will not condemn them. He will correct them in a subtle way that will not create despair in the mercy of Allah and him. Bismillah. We'll stop there, and we'll pick up. Next week with the wisdom of Karim Rasool. And this, uh. This poem, oh yeah, we're going to the. Navs. Talking about Bukhara. Oh yeah. The Sheikh's definitely went in on the path of the Moors deep. On just about everything that we need on this path. To. Seek the righteousness of Allah. And realization of his oneness, inshallah. And that one is within us. Bismillah, was there any questions or comments from anything read this evening? Pray that the read was. Smooth and, uh, could be understood.
Bismillah. Um, I just wanna, wanna say thank you, and, uh. Like, yeah, I was just talking about the morning class, I really appreciate the morning class. And, uh, man, I didn't even know you was gonna hold this one till I just saw it in the WhatsApp. And I'm just like, my man is just holding it down, I appreciate it, cuz it just feel like, I'm just having some coffee with y'all. Just reading, reading, you know what I mean, but we'll, we'll often gather to. Talk about Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, the Prophet Muhammad Salatu Wa Sallam, Sheikh Almaa Bubama. You know, you know, that's, that's not an everyday thing over here in the West all the time, so. It's just real, man, anywhere for real, I appreciate y'all for just holding space, mashallah.
I mean, Alhamdulillah. There is just Sheikh Sufi Bar forgiving the indeed. And Nijazum, allowing us to do so, all praises. There is just Serene Tubal, Sheikh Yebul Far, most definitely for. Being the lights on this path, more idea in the West. We are truly grateful. We appreciate. Every comment, inshallah, these, and we, we, we definitely hope that, you know, as we continue to grow. And we have these. Discussions on Zoom. That, uh, you know, we can expand more, the more of us that are here and just give, give, uh. You know, any type of insight to our experience. On the path, inshallah. The Sheikh says, the believers are mirrors of each other, Alhamdulillah, so. And the more, the more we come and stay around each other, inshallah, we pray that Allah continues to lift us all. Lift us all, raise all of our stations, that which we can. We can all see him. And move in his will, inshallah. Yeah, and our prayers, Alhamdulillah, no question the comments, but close the Kufitu. Inshallah. And we'll come back next Wednesday, pick up where we left off. With the wisdom of Karim Rasool, there is just ring two.
Stoffel lot, I just wanna say, shakran Allah, give thanks, just like Sheikh Abibi.
I mean, there is just Sheikh, there is just Sheikh. I mean, Bismillah, Ra'man, Raheem. Alhamdulillah, Ra'ba, Alamin, Ra'man, Raheem, Malik, Yomuddini, Akna, Abu Dua, Akna, Staini, Kina, Surat, Mustaqim. Sirat Saladin, Aramta, Layhim, Garam, Magdu, Layhim, Waladu. Salatu Fatih, Allahumma, Salatu Fatih, Hee, Li, Ma, Uglika. Wal Khatim, Li, Ma, Sabaka, Nasir, Alaki, Belaki, Wal Hadi, La, Surat, Tikal, Mustaqim. Ala Al, Hee, Yak, Qadr, Hee, Wa, Min, Dari, La, Deen. Bismillah, Ra'man, Raheem, Kufitu. Kafaya, Ain, Sword, Kafaya, Ain, Sword, Kafaya, Ain, Sword. Kufitu, Kuladrari, Niall, Hu, Bissiri, La, Ilaha, La, Hu. Abli, Muradi, Akma, Awahu, Bissiri, La, Ilaha, La, Hu, Yasi, Ria, Usra, Akma, Awahu, Bissiri, La, Ilaha, La, Hu. La, Nabi, Mustafi, Allah, Sarabila, Ilaha, La, Hu, Salata, Mublini, Salam, Alai. Bissiri, La, Ilaha, La, Hu. Asha Allah, bless the night, salam alaikum, peace and light.